All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, of course, Chair of the Committee, Councilman Burnett representing the Eighth District, Councilman Cohen representing the First District, Councilman Glover representing the Thirteenth District. Excuse me, Councilman Glover is not here yet. Councilwoman Porter representing the Tenth District, and Councilwoman Ramos representing the Fourteenth District. And I see Councilwoman Castello of the Eleventh District just joined us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And members of the Office of the President, we have Nikki Thompson on the line.
The Chair.
Matt Stegman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Aaron DeGraff, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Representative the Mayor's Office, I see Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I do not see Natasha. All right. One moment. All right, we're going to be starting off with Bill 21-0068, Curing Mistakes in Bids for the Purpose of Permitting the City Purchasing Agent to waive Minor Irregularities in Bids, Permitting a bidder to cure mistakes in a bid under certain conditions, Permitting a bidder to withdraw a bid under certain conditions, Defining certain conditions, requiring the city purchasing agent to prepare a determination showing that the relief that was granted or denied regarding a bid's correction or withdrawal, and clarifying the duties of the city purchasing agent, notwithstanding this subtitle. This bill was introduced on April 19, 2021, and it was sponsored by President Nick Millsby. I'll open the floor to Nikki to give us a little bit of background on the bill and what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to summarize, the goal of this legislation is to allow for those who submit bids to have the opportunity to correct small irregularities in their bids and then resubmit them to provide some more equity when it comes to ensuring that we're making sure that we have as even a playing field as possible. So some of our smaller contractors oftentimes make small typos or mistakes and would really benefit from the opportunity to cure those prior to the opening of the bids. We have worked with the Law Department on a couple of amendments, but we're still working out some of the issues of constitutionality, and that's totally fine. We can share the amendments that we have worked on so far, or if it's up to you, Mr. Chair, if you would like for us to reserve those for a later work session.
We're happy to walk through the amendments now. Give me a second. So we have the amendments. We can walk through them now. If you'd like, Nikki, you can explain what the amendments are.
So for the first set of amendments for 68, based off of the recommendations from several of the agencies, we have provided some clarification on, number one, removing the word mistake because it was causing some confusion and replacing all instances of mistake with minor irregularities. Additionally, we use the existing BOE definition of minor irregularity again to have fluidity there and ensure that we're using the same definition throughout, based off of the comments made from agencies at their prior hearing. And just to go through what that definition will now mean, it will mean a failure to meet a formal solicitations requirement due to a formatting error with the bid rather than due to a substantive problem with the bid or a defect or variation regarding price, quantity, quality, or delivery that is inconsequential when contrasted with the total cost or scope of the procurement. And just for further clarification, there are some examples added as well. For the Third Amendment, also based off the Law Department's suggestion, we have completely removed solely allowing a bidder to, allowing the bidder to correct at the point of withdrawal. So we're now only solely allowing the bidder to correct a bid rather than completely withdraw the bid. That was also a point of constitutional concern. So we, both Amendment Number Three and Number Four, address that issue because the purpose is to allow for the ability to correct the bid, not necessarily tied to the withdrawal of the bid. So more of a clarification, setting some time restraints. We've agreed on two business days. And Five and Six are technical amendments. Five is about allowing the bidder to give notice of the intent to correct the bid, but it's more so cleaning up to make sure that it aligns with what some of our existing procedures are. And then Six is removing the clause that allows an agent to waive any irregularity. And Seven is also technical as well. So that's kind of where we've had a meeting of the minds so far, but we still have to address some additional issues. I'll also defer to General Counsel DeGraff and Wright, if you would like to go more in depth about what we're still working on with the Law Department. But so far, the amendments that we've shared is where we have come to a meeting of the minds.
Thank you, Director Thompson. As Director Thompson explained, these amendments are to address in response to the Law Department's report and conversations we've had with Chief DePietro and Chief Lundey to make sure that, well, pardon me, to make sure that the legislation does not exceed or infringe on the authority of the Board of Estimates that's outlined in the Charter. So that's the, those are, as Director Thompson explained, the goals of the legislation. At this juncture where we are, is trying to make sure that we address the Law Department's concerns to make sure that the goals of the legislation can fit within, without impeding on the authority of the Board of Estimates, which is outlined in the Charter, and is has some fairly specific provisions with regard to not allowing a verification of bids, and the Board of Estimates has the authority over, you know, what happens after bids are opened and the opening process and awarding contracts. So trying to focus the intent of the bill prior to that point in respecting the authority that's outlined in the Charter. Those are the, sort of rules of the road we're trying to, you know, the needle we're trying to thread at this point. And I think that based on the conversations we've had, we, we're not there yet, but we are looking like we're making some progress in addressing those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we move on to agency reports? All right, so now the committee will hear from agency representatives, please. Please state your name before giving your report. We're going to start off with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietro from the Law Department. So the amendments are good, except they just sort of go full, all the way into solving the concerns of the Law Department. The first issue that I wanted to bring up was in the definition of minor irregularity. There is a section that was, I don't know if it's inadvertently left out in the definition that was, is in the definition in the regulations. And that part adds to that definition that a minor irregularity does not material change, material change the purpose or scope of the solicitation or undermine that competitive process by giving the responder unfair advantage over others. So I think that's probably a pretty important piece to keep in there. I'm sure it was just an oversight. So in addition to that, there's, there's the general scheme of procurement in the city really gives the Board of Estimates the ultimate authority with respect to the procurement processes. The BOE is under Article VII, Section 11A. It specifically says that the BOE is in charge of all purchasing. And that, you know, that's pretty overreaching of all this, everything that's in this bill. The provisions on purchasing in the Charter really just call for an award and a rejection, but not, not necessarily a modification of bids. So, but the BOE does have rulemaking authority, and in their rulemaking authority, they have provided for these minor deficiencies to be cured by the BOE, but not by other, but not by the agency, certainly not by the bidder prior to, after the bid is submitted. Let's see, in Section 47.3 of the bill, the part that remained in the bill provides that the, nothing in this section aggregates the authority of the, of the agent who is, I believe, is referring to the purchasing agent to reject any and all bids, to make partial wars, to increase or decrease the quantities that are listed in the bid. And I think that was to reject any bid that shows any admissions, alterations to form, et cetera, or make any award that the agent deems is in the best interest of the city. I don't really see anywhere where the, where the purchasing agent actually has any of that authority. There's nothing in the Charter. There's nothing in the code that gives the purchasing agent any, any of those types of authority. So I don't think we can say that the bill doesn't, doesn't aggregate authority that the purchasing agent doesn't even have. Let's see. Forty-seven, four, in general, has, talks about curing a bill before submission, but, I mean, after submission, but before opening. I don't know, to me, that doesn't give the Board of Estimates any opportunity to actually see what their irregularity was and, and make a determination of whether, under, under their authority, they would consider that a minor irregularity. And then also somewhat interferes with the Article VII, Section H4, which talks about bids being irrevocable once submitted. Oh, this isn't really, I guess you could argue it's not revoking the bid, it's just changing it. So that's a, that's a point of, you know, that maybe, maybe need to be fleshed out a bit. Let's see. And the other, the final point that I want to make is that in the, in the Charter, it specifically says, under Article VI, Section 11, H5, that agencies that provide recommendations to the Board of Estimates, their recommendations are purely advisory to the board. So this bill doesn't, it sort of overreaches a little bit in that it makes a recommendation, allows for a change that's never even seen by the board. So that, to me, creates a situation where they're not being merely advisory, they're making a determination on behalf of the board regarding the board's powers. So that is it in a nutshell. Like, we're certainly open to discussion, further discussion on it. But those are the remaining problems that we see with the bill.
Thank you, Elena. Next up, we have the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. IMBO did not submit a separate report on this bill. We would join in the Law Department's analysis and propose amendments on this bill.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Department of Finance wasn't able to join this afternoon, but they stand by their previous report. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Next up, we've got the Department of General Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Marwan Alcaraz. Director Chi Chi was supposed to join us at 2:30. I was told about this meeting just about 20 minutes ago. I'm not familiar with the, all the terms of the bill, but I believe we submitted a memo and we addressed our concerns in the memo that was provided.
Thank you, Marwan.
You're very welcome.
Next up is the Department of Planning.
Mr. Chair, Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I don't believe a representative from the Department of Planning was able to join this afternoon, but they also will stand by their existing report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Mayor's Office, Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
Sure. This is Paul Taylor, the Director, and we stand by our report and also share some of the concerns of the Law Department in particular, making sure there's adequate justification for any changes that are made and that the Council, I'm sorry, Board of Estimates would actually have the ability to review and make those changes or authorize them. So I stand by our existing report that was submitted June 22, and in addition to that, we concur with the Law Department's analysis.
Thank you, Paul. And last but not least, the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is Marcia Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We did submit our report back in June, and that still holds. We had deferred to the Departments of Law and Finance. We haven't had a chance to look at the amendments that were proposed here today. But obviously, the Law Department has had an opportunity, has been working closely with drafters. So we are very confident they will cover all concerns. Thank you.
And actually, not last but not least, the Comptroller's Office. I realize you guys weren't on the list again. I believe this happened last time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jim Knighton, Director of Policy and Comptroller Bill Henry's Office. We stand by our earlier report submitted on June 15, 2021, which is favorable with amendment on Council Bill 21-0068. And we have not had a chance to evaluate the amendments proposed by the Law Department. So we're still looking those over. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, any questions from the committee? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues, and thanks to the Council President's Office and the Law Department for working on this. In the original bill, it seems like there's two ways that there can be notified that somebody had made a, what's the new word? Not a mistake, but an irregularity. One, the bidder could say, whoops, we misspelled this, and we want to redo it. And then the other is that maybe somebody who opens the bid goes, oh, there's a typo here. So let me give you a chance to redo that. Is that still the case even with the amendments?
Currently with the amendments, it's a scaled back version that would allow for the bidder to do the first option that you mentioned. So, hey, I've noticed I've made a mistake, and I want to, you know, provide notice and then correct that bid. And we've taken out the part that would allow for post-opening evaluation based off of the prior conversations that we had at the last hearing, as it was very clear that that was going to be, I'm too close to the line of authority, basically.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that clarity. That was my only question, Mr. Chair. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Nikki, based on the feedback that we've gotten today, do you want to, does the Council President want to move these amendments today, or would you like to hold until we get further amendments?
Definitely want to follow up with the Law Department and continue to work together on these amendments. So we're happy to hold.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the committee before we move on? All right, we are going to go into recess and go into our next hearing. Bill 21-0069, Transparency and Procurement for the Purpose of Adding Certain Disclosure Requirements Related to the Fulfillment of Detailed Specifications for Contracts, Prior Contracting Experience, and the Demographic Characteristics of Employees, Other Sources of Labor, and Board Members of Contractors and Subcontractors for City Contracts Over $100,000, Defining Certain Terms, Establishing Certain Administrative Penalties, and Generally Relating to Better Transparency in Baltimore City Procurement. This bill is introduced on April 19, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Antonio Glover. I don't know if that's right. Was that?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Glover informed us that he is having technical difficulties, but his staff, Jamal Simpson, should be on the hearing. I'm not sure if he needs to be elevated.
Sure, I'll take a look. Jamal, would you, would you be able to give us some, some background on the bill for Councilmember Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good, good afternoon, everyone. Councilman Glover has experienced some technical difficulties, and that's why I'm standing here today. But this bill is designed to create more transparency in the procurement process, which, which has traditionally inequitable as it pertains to citizens of Baltimore actually getting contracts from, through the city. And so Councilman Glover stands with the amendments that are proposed by the Law Department for constitutionality, and we look forward to seeing this bill pass.
Thank you, Jamal. We're going to pull up the amendments and walk through them one by one. And if you could give us a little insight on what we're trying to accomplish with each, that'd be really helpful. Each member should have received these amendments electronically via email, but we'll walk through them one by one to get some in-person insight. So Jamal, if you could help us out here.
Actually, Mr. Chair, since these are directly from the Law Department's report, it's a straight copy. Is it fine to let the Law Department walk through their amendments?
Sure.
Because we've submitted them pretty much on the Law Department's behalf. If that's fine with the Law Department and you, Mr. Chair.
That's fine by me. As long as somebody knows what these things do.
That would be me, Mr. Chair. It's Hillary Rulie from the Law Department. So there were four amendments that we needed. I haven't seen this, like, formatted one, but I trust it's, it's the exact same as what's attached to our bill report. So I'll go through them one by one. The first one's kind of simple. It's just retroactivity. It's saying it applies forward, not backwards, because we couldn't make a law that sort of people's contractual rights retrospectively. So that's all the, the first one does. The next one, I'm not sure. Let's see. So it looks like they switched two and three in mind. So let me see. What, what's listed here is two. Yeah. So is really listed as Law Department's Number Three in the bill report, but it seems that it's doing the same thing. And what it does is instead of mandating by law that contracts have a certain, that the contracting parties have to follow this, it basically says we're mandating that the city put these terms in their future contracts. So it achieves the same objective, but it does it in a constitutionally permissible way. So that's all that that one does. The next one on three is discretionary legislative function. So the bill is written, said at the end, kind of, oh, and by the way, you know, the executive branch can just add some more criteria to the list of things we want to include, to be reported upon. And that doesn't really work legislatively because that doesn't give the executive branch the guidance of the elected legislators. And so instead, we've removed that. But I will note that once this becomes a term in future contracts, we can always add to it. So again, you'll, you'll end up with the same result. Just done more, you know, done in a legal manner. And then the last one is the automatic breach provisions. So again, instead of having a law that attempts to say, okay, you two parties have contractually agreed on terms, but we're going to now by law say what a breach is, we took that language out, and we shouldn't need it because, you know, this is just basically taking the same concept and sticking it in future contracts so that, you know, the contract is enforceable with the new disclosure requirements just as any other term in the contract would be enforceable. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but with these amendments, we could approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent. Thank you, Hillary. We will, we'll actually move on with the agency reports, and we'll jump right into the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. IMBO did not submit a separate report on this. I will state, though, that we are obviously in favor of tracking any sort of demographic data regarding contracting, specifically regarding race, ethnicity, and gender, but we would join in the Law Department's assessment and amendments.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I think we actually have some representatives from the Department of Finance on now. They may need to be elevated, but they do stand by their existing report.
Yes, this is Keisha Brown. Thank you. I'm available for the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Keisha. Anything you want to add to the report or any comments on the amendments that's put forward?
No, sir. We stand by our report.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we've got the Labor Commissioner.
Good afternoon. This is Deborah Moore Carter from the Office of the Labor Commissioner. We stand by our
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
This is Paul Taylor. We stand by our report submitted June 22. I did note, though, that there was a fifth item, and I just didn't want to bypass that if there was an amendment. It looks like there was another page that we didn't go to, the fifth item on that report.
Thank you. We'll, we'll take a look into that. We're going to pull it up.
It's an additional citation to require this to be applied to prospective contracts and not respectively.
Okay, got it. So, yeah, we stand by our report and we concur with the Law Department's assessment.
Excellent. Thank you. And finally, the Comptroller's Office.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Jim Knighton again. We stand by our report from June 18 on Bill 21-0069, which was favorable with amendment. We had a chance to review the Law Department's amendments. They look fine to us. I would like to remind the committee that at the hearing, we had proposed a very minor technical amendment on Page Five, Line Five, relating to the annual report that's required under this bill. We were simply seeking to add the Mayor, City Council, and Board of Estimates to, so the Board of Estimates would be one of the bodies that receives the, the annual report. That's, that's all we were wanting to do.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
That's all we have for agency reports. Any, any questions from the committee? Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to applaud you all for undertaking such a very challenging and complex process within the city of Baltimore. I did have a question related to additional administrative burden on agencies to track, to track these additional demographics. Just to confirm, there's no additional burden on agencies related, related to this added process, correct? So that question can be for the bill sponsor?
Councilwoman. To my knowledge, there is no additional burden on the agency, agencies. The burden actually would be To my knowledge, there is no additional burden on the agency, um, agencies. The burden actually would be.
I'm sorry, you were muted. What'd you say would be on where?
The, the Director of Finance.
Okay.
Additionally, some of the data points that were going to be more burdensome for the, for some of the departments to collect, uh, we remove those as well, um, in, in our amendments. And ultimately, we, we would like for this to be as seamless as possible and really put the requirement on contractors to provide as much information as possible. Um, so we work to eliminate some of the data points that were going to be heavier lifts for the agency.
Sure. Thank you so much, Director Thompson.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. No, no further questions.
All right. Any other questions from the committee? And, uh, I understand, um, Jamal, uh, we're, we're not going to, do we want to move these amendments today? I, I understand we're not going to move the bill today.
Yes, uh, the councilman is prepared to move the amendment.
Okay. So, uh, I'll extend a motion to move the amendments.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilwoman Burnett, seconded by Councilwoman Ramos. Uh, Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Glover is having technical difficulties. Um, so I'll, I'll mark him as an excuse absence. Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Um, all right, so that, that motion will pass. Um, we are not going to vote on the actual bill today. I think we're going to hold that, uh, to a later date. Um, so with that, any other, any other statements, um, from, uh, the Office of the Sponsor, Jamal?
Absolutely. We, we'd like to thank, um, uh, uh, of course, the Council Services Office and of course, the law department, continued efforts in trying to push this forward, uh, push this bill forward to see it pass committee and ultimately, uh, the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal. All right, so we're going to, um, put that bill in a recess and move on to our third and final bill today. That's going to be Bill twenty one dash zero zero seven zero, required market, market research for the purpose of requiring contracting agencies to conduct market research investigations before determining that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concessions contracts. Requiring the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office to attempt to identify qualified certified business enterprises if contracting agencies state that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concessions, concessions contracts. This bill was introduced on April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Uh, Councilwoman Burnett, floor shorts.
Uh, so I think you, uh, the, the description does a pretty good job, uh, laying out what the bill does. Uh, and, and we, we talked a little bit about it at the last hearing, uh, but still needed a little bit more work on this one, but essentially it's to ensure that there is an adequate assessment done, uh, before, uh, contracts are finalized. Uh, so we have a full lay of the land. Um, you know, one of the, the examples, uh, you know, I gave at introduction and we'll give again, uh, is, you know, we had a situation where, uh, at the beginning of the pandemic, there was a masked producer in Baltimore who had been doing similar, this similar work for over a decade and had never been contacted once by, uh, anyone in city government to, to, to work and, and until the pandemic kicked off. And it's one of those situations where it may not necessarily align. The, the example doesn't always necessarily align with the, with the bill, but the idea is that we should have a full lay of the land of all of the businesses that produce products in Baltimore City, particularly if they're small, uh, and women owned, uh, so that they, uh, are included in the process, that they are, we are able to build their capacity and ultimately so that we, as city government, are supporting, uh, local, uh, minority and women-owned businesses in Baltimore City. Um, they, there are some amendments as well, um, that we can discuss. I don't, I don't know, we're working with the, the Council President's Office on this one. If there was anything else, um, that I may have missed in, in the description from their office, uh, but that, that is the gist of the bill. Um, and we are not, not looking to move it today, but did want some consideration for the amendments.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman Burnett. Um, we can pull the amendments up and, and walk through them one by one.
Mr. Chair, these amendments are also, um, directly from Embu's report. So if they would like to uh, speak to the amendments, um, from our perspective, these are, um, mostly technical, making sure that what we're asking for is can actually be implemented by Embu. Uh, as already been raised, their capacity is really important to us to make sure that this is done successfully. So, um, that's our perspective on, on the amendments, but I welcome the agency to share their thoughts as well.
Thank you, Nikki. Um, I'll, I'll then kick it over to Embu to, to walk us through the amendments if, if we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so we have proposed four amendments. Uh, the first is to, uh, the purpose paragraph. What it does is just, it's consistent with the, uh, the following, uh, three amendments to omit any references to the Board of Estimates. Really, uh, the overall amendment just, just take away the need and the market research has been compiled by both the agency and Embu to the Board of Estimates. And this is in line with the, the uh, express in the report regarding, uh, act that would have on, uh, Board of Estimates, uh, procedures if all of the waivers were second amendment, uh, removes the requirement for Embu to notify the Board of Estimates if Embu identifies qualified, uh, certified business enterprises. Amendment three eliminates the proposed requirement that the BOE approves specific utilization requirements and waivers. And the fourth amendment, uh, simply, uh, as in, uh, language in section three, barring Embu to implement additional regulations, uh, to govern the process of how, uh, we will be accepting the actual required market research. And all, all of these amendments, uh, stem from the fact that, uh, Embu, uh, gets a tremendous amount of waivers. And we believe if all of those waivers would have to go to the Board of Estimates, it would tragically bog down the process of city procurement through all Board of Estimates, uh, meetings. And part of this is due to the fact that, uh, all of our waivers are not, uh, always just due to someone, uh, seeking to not have participation on the contract. We, uh, are confronted with waivers where obviously there's a lack of capacity for businesses to be in place, but, uh, even more so in terms of this bill, I would say that we also have situations where there's just non-segmentable work, uh, for contracts or just purely for salaries where we cannot say under that contract that we could get, uh, MBE and WBE participation. Um, and we have a tremendous amount of contracts that do, they are purely for salaries and it would just really, uh, add to the workload. We're confident that Embu, uh, would be able to, uh, continue to, uh, analyze these waiver requests and would be in an even greater position to do so uh, with the, uh, codified requirement for the agency to do this market research. This is the research that in my time I've been advocating to the agency that we would like to see to be able to understand the steps that they've undertaken if they're requesting a, uh, a waiver on the front end. And additionally, even once we get to the, uh, prime contractors, that they're undertaking, uh, significant efforts before they contact us, uh, to say that they need a waiver. And that's what we've been, um, implementing in my time, uh, thus far to ensure that people are not just, uh, assuming that waivers will be given and that waivers are able to be given just by articulating that they believe, uh, that at this time that it's necessary.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Um, and I, I, I suppose, um, for the law department that, um, you guys are on the same page here. If not, please let me know.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Victor Villa from the Law Department. Yeah, we have reviewed the amendments, uh, and, uh, we will approve them for form and legal sufficiency. We are particularly interested in that fourth amendment that gives the minority and that gives Embu the opportunity to create rules and regulations because we think a lot of the detail, uh, that will flesh out this bill needs to be put in rules and regulations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, uh, I'll kick it over to the Department of Finance. Keisha, you are, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. Chair. Um, the Department of Finance stands by their report. Um, we do not have any additional comments. Um, with the exception that may be a question of fiscal impact, um, the Department of Finance does not anticipate any fiscal impact.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, uh, we'll move on to the Mayor's Office and Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
This is Paul Taylor. Um, we've reviewed, uh, the bill and we stand by our report of June twenty second and, uh, find that this, given the authority to, uh, for, um, Chief Lundey to, to sort of review this is, is the right direction. We, we agree with the amendments.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, next we've got the Labor Commissioner.
Good afternoon, um, Mr. Chair. Since this does not involve a labor relations matter, we defer to the appropriate agencies. Um, the Department of Finance, the Law Department and Embu.
Thank you. And finally, the Comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim Knighton again. Uh, the Comptroller's Office stands by its report from June twenty second on Council Bill twenty one oh oh seven oh. Uh, we supported the bill at that time. We have reviewed the amendments from Embu and we support the bill, uh, with those amendments. And, uh, like Mr. Turvila, we're looking forward to a robust discussion on those, uh, regulations. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. Um, now the committee will, um, i- does any of the committee members have any questions of the agencies or the sponsor? Uh, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is kind of a general question. Um, I, uh, the city administrator is not on, maybe the mayor's office knows this answer. Uh, but the, um, city administrator was doing a top-down, in-out analysis of procurement and I was curious where that was and how the three bills today that we've, um, talked about fit into that.
Uh, good afternoon, Nina Themlos with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. At this point, I believe, and I can follow up with the committee following, um, but that we're currently, we have a request out for proposals for that consultant and that should be finalized shortly. Um, but I will confirm those details and follow up with the committee following the hearing.
Thank you. And then, um, just following up with that, there's no objection from the mayor's office or the, um, city administrator to move forward on these bills. Um, given, even though that there'll be, uh, an analysis coming up soon.
Uh, Nina Themlos again. Um, so no, we met with the city administrator and went through all three of these bills and as long as they meet uh, form and legal sufficiency and the amendments that we've been discussing are adopted, uh, they should fall in line with the plan that, uh, the procurement overhaul will, that the path that that will take.
Oh, great. Okay, that's good news. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chair, that was my question. Thanks.
Excellent questions. Uh, any other questions from the committee? All right, um, Councilwoman Burnett, uh, do you want to move forward with these amendments today or do we want to hold off until a later date? I understand we're not going to vote this bill out today.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with the amendments. Uh, it's a committee is.
Excellent. So I'll entertain a motion to move the amendments.
I move.
Second, by, moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. Um, Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Uh, Cohen?
Yes.
Costello? Looks like we may have. Oh, there we go. Uh, Glover is an excuse absence. Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
The motion carries and, um, we're not going to move forward with the bill today, but, um, I, I want to open the floor to Councilwoman Burnett. If you've got any closing comments before we go into recess.
Uh, I don't, uh, we'll keep working on the agency's side, uh, to get the rest of the bill and propose additional amendments moving forward. Um, thank you. Thank you to the committee.
Thank you. Thank you all. Um, and with that, we are going to go into recess and I will see you all next time, um, when we revisit these bills. Have a good one.